September 4th, 2018 meeting of the Deepo Bay City Council is called to order. It is rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do you have any special roll please?
Calendar?
Here.
Short?
Here.
Scotter?
Here.
Gambino?
Here.
Leff?
Here.
Grant?
Aye.
We have a call.
Thank you sir. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of August 21st, 2018, but the executive session on the regular meeting? Yep. I believe that we approve both of those sets of minutes. There a second? By calendar, seconded by Short. Any discussion?
Calendar?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
Scotter?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Leff?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
It was Mayor Leff Iman, we approve the council table as presented and I can answer any questions.
Okay, I'll second that. But there was an exception.
No, it's not an exception. I called Jeff today when I reviewed it and asked why Johnny was going instead of the Reporters Association for the state. That's why I provided that information. Okay, so it was moved by Gambino, seconded by Grant?
Yes.
Special orders, isn't this where we do applications? No.
That's, that's number?
That's in six.
That's in six.
Actually, no, it should have been under special orders, you're correct.
Oh yeah.
Save.
My mistake.
No, that's okay, not a big deal. Are there any special orders? Want to interview and hopefully appoint?
I feel the community that you need.
I read all your material and I'm, I can see you have a really deep commitment to Deepo Bay and small town. As you say, it's very different from the city. I really did appreciate the wide, direct amount of experience you have had with fishing, the fishing industry.
And then can we vote for both at the same time? Is that all right, the council?
Yes.
Okay. When the seat clears? I assume you're Carol?
Yes.
Carol McCarthy who has applied to be on the.
I think many people make themselves out of the law, so. I can't be proud of that particularly well. And I'm just glad I've been in facting and I've been working. And I was learning that she did a lot of this, the practice increase, but one more on what.
Anyone have questions or comments? Yes.
It's come to my attention that, that you're involved in appeal on the land use issue.
I, I would of course recuse myself on anything concerning that particular case. Do you want the council to put it off, or do you want to go?
It's starting until January, is that what?
No, it's not right. Maybe, I think maybe putting it off is the best idea. Why don't we do that? And as soon as that's resolved, you can. And what could? When the complaint has been resolved? Has been ruled one? Ah, yes, then, yeah, I think you definitely want to wait until they're through, it's ruled one. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and will hold applications on Tuesday, so you don't have to make new copies for the next.
And then you would never find me?
Oh, of course.
Of course, you bet.
All right, so then let's, we have to vote on the. Commissioner, can you debate?
Always looks the same. Yeah. So, on those chairs, maybe we'll get a higher frame, so the side frame, so it sits higher up there. Same style, but sit higher. No, I, I think there's options with this. Because the side is unit, yeah.
Are you ready?
I'm ready. Votes have been counted, unanimous, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir. Motion?
Oh, motion to accept.
Seconded by Gambino to accept.
Benjamin speaking in your behalf.
I'm gonna, I.
Next on the agenda, public comments. Does anyone, any member of the public have any comments? No? Okay. Right along to unfinished business, we talk about the harbor.
So, I, I put in a email for Gomber himself, Tyler is a. We did look into the main stuff with the cost, dam of different, upland, total fight for midseason, close to $500,000. Plus, to do that, then Cora was. Were told, like, almost. Both sides done, which is the, above the check dam and the dredging, so all we can do is.
What kind of schedule?
The monies go out in. I would ask Loria to possibly remove the three, or replace, repair one pine in the end of the. That would be kind of an emergency situation, to wait for them to come down, and we could blow it and stuff. That's gonna be hopefully, I'd give it this way, be out there in five.
I'll have more information.
Given the timeframe that the Corps usually issues permits for in water work. The fact that this. No, Kate knows that.
So, hopefully, get the contract out early, like, if we're, like, last time is, we were, five years ago, we were on the first of the list, long care ball week, so hopefully that'll be the same go around, hoping. And, because the in waters in October, late October, it was on the, the.
The three pines that are creating the hazard going to fall in that in water.
I don't know, I could check on that, because I have to talk to the Corps also about even installing those off, and, because we're thinking, the two that we want to remove are actually not, like, bearing pines, where they're, they're just to kind of keep, keep them in line. So, if we remove those, they're one end, so the one we're gonna have to repair, and fortunately.
Those two are holding much, they're just, they're kind of, you know, there's a lot
of pines on, as you can see, a lot of H3s, you know, that, kind of, is a stability surge issue.
So, if we can get those out of there. I just don't know until I talk to the council. About the in water. Yeah, because it's statewide, it's statewide, so we should.
Yes.
Deepo Bay, Sanitary District.
Okay, we have hurried come in and looked over my last 12 months of billings.
So, all of those corrections have been made and. You all have a packet showing the original invoice and new invoice.
The interesting thing is.
But also, the other thing we need to talk about is wastewater advisory committee needs to. Ideally, it would be the first week of October. So, if you know, Kathy and Mayor, if you want to, kind of give me some dates, then I can notify them and we can pull it on.
Pete has been in contact with Dennis Bartolos there.
I think we go ahead.
We had to have one in by October 3rd. First week of October.
Yeah, and then, and then the three of us can react to that when we get the email.
Okay.
First week of October.
Yes, we, Visions is having a users conference on, in October 3rd through the 5th. I'd like to send Carla and Beth to this conference, it's up in Leavenworth, Washington. Lot with utility billings and.
We keep hearing this about utilities is coming out with.
Cost on that is going to be, what'd I say? Right around a thousand dollars. It's, it's a good investment.
I wouldn't put that in the budget, do you?
Yeah.
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 Motion?
For the Vision Solutions, Municipal Solutions.
Gambino, seconded by Short. Yes?
Great.
Calendar? Short? Scotter? Yes. Okay. Wastewater Bio-Solids Hole-in Program, how about?
So, you know, our permit is being renewed through DQ and there was that hearing we had the last week that. So, what we're finding out is there's quite a bit of red tape. In the situation that we're in right now, and it's, it's gonna be very costly with the new permitting and the new rules.
We talked about how to do the follow the rules by the book, there's so many people out there and maybe sure that we're buying by the book, but it's gonna cost you a lot of money to keep them and make sure that the water tables are correct, and with all the red tape that is going on, we're deciding that we can do options like just having Linkin City haul the bio solids for us for one haul, and then after that, we'll, we'll have our system interact here shortly, it's a turnkey system, it's some installation that we'll be able to process our own bio solids, dewatering the case, we'll have the downstairs that the municipality will haul to us, it's much more than the.
Us all.
We could actually just say.
They, we're not really throwing in the towel, you know, they want, however we want word, it's, it's more just.
But I think it's, it's about money and the feasibility, so I think we have to have Linkin
City process this last 200,000 gallons of sludge and.
Oh, I'm gonna break them again, this is just for one haul for Linkin City, they'll
process it and they'll haul it to Coffin View for us. We still have to get a, a program started with, it's a user program for Coffin View, because it goes into a, a large area that's like a dry compost, and, rather than landfill, because it is a class, class B.
Motion that we could go on the.
Okay. It has been, it has been moved by Grant, seconded by Gambino, any further discussion? Yes.
Short?
Yes.
Scotter?
Yes.
Let's see, we're down to correspondents.
Really a whole lot, we did get a call from Mel Nylan at the office, and he said that he had put in a good word for the city of Deepo Bay with Congressman Kurt Traitor's office, he'd been. He made a call to Congressman Kurt Traitor's office.
Now we are ready for city staff.
The council know the, the project that was the end of the Inselites and Melody is now. So, the neighborhood has two new fire hydrants, a new water main, which is oriented up for fire flows now. So, before we had 14 homes on a two inch line, and now we have those 14 homes on a six inch line of fire flow.
And I, and I would like to say that I took the right up there, I wanted to, the guys do a thousand star. Cleaning and cleaning and it's.
The edges, the paving's done and, and some of the neighbors actually got hold of the paving company, got some work done on the, like, question about how come.
So and so got more done in their driveway, and I only got this, well, this was.
But, all in all, the neighbors are very happy. It's one of those areas where we spend a lot of time, and the ones are going six inch hot holes, or fixing that two inch line, and, and all in all, it's.
Now the next thing is speed bumps probably, and maybe street lights, and that's all around a corner, but, yeah, it turned out very good. So, next on the list is the forest name that we're, we're working on for harbor, so we've kind of piecemealing that together. Contractor got it off the, the new project out here, and then I had the guy. Contractor got it off the, the new project out here and then I had, uh, the guys run pipe another five hundred feet down to the condos. Eventually gonna work our way to the harbor pump station. Now, force main, it's under pressure, very large pumps down in there, but. I don't know that the, the hills of Depot Bay, um, may be an impact down the road in the next twenty years, but we're way ahead of that curve. This line is now gonna be able to carry sewer. That wells, as the system grows, as Depot Bay flooding, if everything grows, we're gonna be able to stay on that for the next probably. And this winter will go to tie. Pulling it together and the other line is made of, uh, asbestos concrete, so asbestos product you don't want to bring to the surface, so we're gonna need. So it's better probably just to leave, leave all of that for later. Sometimes it can be used to as other, uh, like, uh, conduit or something. A lot of Morocco is done that way, they left the line in, they put utilities gas line in.
Sure. Oh, so, um, Brady, that's, I, I mean, that's great that we're doing this and that, uh, but I, I, I've heard, I know of at least one developer that complains to me. That, um, our SDC.
Water tank. We have like one point two million gallons of water on one side of town, the other side is, is close to over half a million. They, you know, they have plenty of storage, if they, if they actually, and we only use like a couple. If, if you go back ten years, two thousand and eight, we only had a hundred and twenty thousand. Water for the whole community. Quite a bit of, of weeks and. Any commission, um, on the next meeting, talk to Laura.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm over here, I just had a question. Brady, I, the last month or so, I have noticed that, kind of near the corner of Ellingson and Coast Avenue, um, a homeowner right on the ocean has put up. Signs on their shrubbery that are permanent now, it's like, it says no public parking, and it's a public street, um. Oh, is, what's going on there?
Is that, uh, is that the, uh, the greenhouse, or is that?
I, I, it has a hedge, I'm not sure.
Their cottage. Um, yeah, I didn't realize that was there, they can't, they can't have that on a public street, it's a, a public right of way, so I, I wasn't aware of that. But I'll, I'll talk to them, I know who owns that.
Okay, they must be having some parking challenge, which everybody does down that area.
There's parking, she's. But yes, um, yeah, they can't place those signs, we've had that, that's quite common actually.
Oh, is it?
Not in that area, but through town, there's always some names, they, yeah, uh. Paris Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah, one oh one, they're not really.
Southside.
Thank you, that's all.
But sure, I'll, I'll take a note and, and absolutely, I'll, I'll talk to them. They, they have the little restaurant down there. Little walkabout food place. They have a little restaurant.
Okay, uh, yes.
Uh, just a couple things, um, got the, uh, results back from the, uh. County on our candidates and.
Everybody wants his job, huh? A single contested race and nobody made it.
Thankful's job.
And also I brought this, uh, city council assignments, you all got another copy of it. We've been missing several different. And I felt we really lapped on was the conference that Chinook wins.
Okay, we can move on to council comments, and since I always start with either Jerome or Debbie, I think I'll start with Lauren today. Okay. I want to commend staff on improvements up to the landscaping in front of city. Really starting to look nice. I would be absent. Can you discuss that?
I bring that up, I'm sorry, I forgot, I can do a brief update on that, so, um, that curb on Cone Street, um. Lost its access to the house, no. Owners that own the lot next to him, they were able to have access through their, after, uh, Mr. Hunter's disease. So he just wants to gain access to the back of his lot, and I've since talked to Mr. Woodmark, who owns the lot to the south, and he said. Access through. Gate or a mandate, so. Willing to work with the property owner and also, um, is willing to, um. Grated and gravelled. Not gonna pave it, but folks can park in there as, uh, a parking lot area, so I don't know if it's. Looks like with the Allen's where he leases it to the city and we put a sign up, but, uh, he's working on that.
You gotta check on what insurance issues exist. Now, public parking on a privately owned. What do we have to do to protect?
Right, I was gonna sit down with Larry Lewis, um. It's, it's, number one is over.
Just wanna make sure.
Yes.
Check our Ts and D's, right?
Okay.
That was it.
Okay, uh, let's see.
Or the curb issue, I just drove by there today, just to look at. In front, uh, and, and so. How cars parked on the right of way, because you, right, something gets out, you move the curb, you can park there, the car be hanging out on the road, it's, it has no parking. So having Mr. Woodmark have this option is, is great, actually, it's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, he's mentioned, he's talked to me about that.
I thought you.
Welcome to fall, first day of fall, that means, that's when all the. Revenue's fall.
That was gonna be my comment, the salmon boat.
We could both, we could both.
We could both do it, that's right, because there are many times when there have been three or four places. That would be great.
Really, it's good money.
Okay.